Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the first virtual cabinet meeting. As a webinar meeting, this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed afterwards on the council's website. The agenda we have before us tonight doesn't actually fit best practice for video meetings. Presently, there are eight items on the agenda. Best practice for video meetings would be shorter and sharper. Questions should be submitted before. And could I remind everybody, if not speaking, microphones to be muted so as not to cause background noise? Obviously, the work going on from here, reports may need to be streamlined and new protocols. So we'll move into other items and that will be. I may note at this point that we'll be adjourning after item seven this evening because that item eight requires a lot more in-depth discussion and the sheer size of this agenda will not actually promote that sort of discussion. We will be adjourning this item and then we'll be recontrolling the meeting at the earliest possible time. So you'll have to watch out for the notices from that. Moving on to the plenary. And have I the Cabinet's permission to sign the minutes of the meeting of the Cabinet held on the 19th of February 2020? If you have any comments or questions on the accuracy or the minutes, please use the chat facility. If there are no comments, I will assume you are in complete agreement for me to sign those minutes. There's no chat, Lorraine. Are there any apologies?
I have no apologies, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I would like to inquire whether any members wish to declare any interest in respect of any items on the agenda.
None, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to inquire whether any officers wish to declare any interest in respect to any items on the agenda.
Chairman, the three statutory officers would have declared an interest in item eight, but as that has now been adjourned, obviously they will declare at that time.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions from members of the public?
There are no questions, Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to part two, gender items. Are there any recommendations from the overview and scrutiny committees for this meeting?
None for this meeting, Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any recommendations from the Boston Town Area Committee?
None for this meeting, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. What I'd like to do at this point is actually move item seven up the agenda, which is the Boston crematorium cremators. And this is going to be the next item and I'd like to ask councillor Vaughan Stevens to present. Could you bring councillor Stevens to the screen, please? Thank you.
Thank you. In presenting this paper, my previous conversations with Cabinet colleagues have been all about securing the future prosperity of the crematorium service and this remains my long-term ambition. However, issues and events that have occurred more recently require the urgent attention of Cabinet before those ambitions can be realised. This is the first opportunity I've had to bring a report before Cabinet since the maintenance company contracted to service our cremators entered administration in March. We currently have no contract maintenance in place and the condition of our cremators are such that no companies are willing to take them on. A legacy of poorly executed maintenance has left us with two cremators that are unreliable and temperamental in their operation. This is a situation that staff on site can no longer manage and a risk the council cannot tolerate. Doing nothing is not an option. The council is exposed to unacceptable risk and potential failure of crucial critical infrastructure. The council has accrued capital in reserves that has been replenished by the service. And I ask Cabinet to exercise their discretion, use these funds to support the recommendations in this report. It is vital we act decisively with urgency. So that's my report, Chairman.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Stevens. I will now ask the Cabinet members if they have any questions on this report. And what I'll do is I'll bring them in one by one. I'm not sure whether councillor Brown is with us yet. Councillor Brown?
I am with you. I can hear everything. You can't see me. I need to press something. Can you see me, Paul?
Well, you can't come in. That's fine as you are. Have you got any questions? Have you got any questions for?
No, none at this stage, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Griggs, have you got any questions?
More of a few comments, really, firstly. And obviously, we all understand that the current COVID situation left us in an untenable situation. Although I do query in section one of the report, paragraph three, where it says independent cremated design and performance appraisal commissioned by the council, et cetera, et cetera, identified fundamental design flaws with our cremator. And obviously, that was only identified in August of last year. But I'd like some information further in the future stating how come it wasn't realised until they'd been in for a number of years and operating as such. Obviously, now it doesn't help us because the company have gone bust, so we won't be able to get money back for them. But it would have been nice if the problem had have been identified beforehand and it'd be interesting to see why it wasn't. And obviously, I think the report, yeah, is self-explanatory. We can't leave ourselves without cremators. It's an important service for the residents of Boston. And I think that's my only comment. Thank you.
Can I come in there, Leader, please? I think, thank you, I think councillor Griggs will be, when I present the recommendations, I think he will feel quite satisfied with what the recommendations are. And so if you can just bear with me till we get to that point and thank you.
I'm sure he'll bear with us on that. Thank you, Vaughan. Councillor Howard?
Yes, good evening, everybody. No, I'm okay with everything that councillor Stevens has presented. I've looked at the report. There's a lot of detail there, answers a lot of questions, but I'm okay with everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Howard. Councillor Sharman?
Hi, nothing to add. Other than it reads really well. It's, yeah, brilliant report. Thank you.
Councillor Welton?
Yeah, thank you, Leader. Just a few comments I'd like to make. And first of all, I'd like to thank councillor Stevens for her tireless work in identifying this and how she has dealt with it like a dog with a bone. Unfortunate statement, but that's exactly what she's like. She has hounded us as a cabinet over the last few weeks relentlessly to ensure that this report is correct, it's accurate and that everything has been done that can be done at this stage to ensure that the cremators we have are operating as best they can do. So for that, I'd like it on record that councillor Stevens is thanked for the work she's put in. I think without her drive and determination to make this happen, we would probably be in a much worse position. So thank you councillor Stevens. The report is very detailed, it's very concise and I'm happy with the recommendations in the report and I look forward to your recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Welton. I'm in the same position as councillor Welton. I've gone through the report. I know how tenacious Vaughan has been through for the period of this report. And it just, would you like to propose the report and give me the recommendations, read out the recommendations, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I move the recommendations in the report with minor amendments as follows. One, approve the purchase of a temporary replacement cremator. And two, seek a further report on the long-term solution, including the potential additional of abatement. And invite scrutiny to consider the report. Three, and approve an exemption from contract procurement procedure rules, part four, section H, under 3.1.1 brackets two. An exemption is necessary because of any unforeseen event involving significant disruption to council services. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second there?
Councillor Griggs, I'm happy to second the proposal. When councillor Stevens said wait until the recommendations, I had read the report and I was aware of, you know, the plan going forward. It's more information about information in the past that I would like. But I'm sure I'll speak to councillor Stevens outside the meeting, but happy to second the recommendation.
Thank you for that. I'm sure she will expedite that information with the usual vigour. Right, the recommendations have been moved and seconded, so I'll move to a vote. Could you turn the Cabinet microphones on, please? Lorraine will call out the names in alphabetical order and they will respond.
Thank you, Leader. I will do a roll call for Cabinet members. It's not a recorded vote as such. It's just the easiest way of doing the vote while we're doing video conferencing. So if you could respond for against or abstain. Councillor Brown?
Paul, can you hear me?
Yes, councillor Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes, councillor Brown.
This is useless, absolutely useless. I can't. Never mind, carry on. I can hear you anyway and thank goodness you can hear me. So four, please.
Thank you. Councillor Griggs?
Four.
Councillor Howard?
Four.
Councillor Sharman?
Four.
Councillor Skinner?
Four.
Councillor Stevens?
Four.
Councillor Welton?
Four.
Recommendations are carried unanimously, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving back on to the agenda as published. The item is the air quality action plan. And once again, I will ask councillor Vaughan Stevens to present the report. Could you bring councillor Stevens to the screen, please?
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
The Austin Borough Council has declared two air quality management areas. Haven Bridge Road, established 2001, and Bargette Bridge, 2005. And this is due to the air quality at these locations failing to meet the UK air quality objective for nitrogen dioxide. This primarily arises from high usage of private vehicles for making short journeys within Boston. The declaration of the air quality management areas places a statutory obligation on the local authority to produce an air quality action plan. A draft air quality action plan was developed by a steering group. This was led by environmental health, which was composed of officers from across a number of council departments and with colleagues from Lincolnshire County Council highways and public health. A single plan has been developed as the air quality issues in both areas are the same. The draft air quality action plan has previously been presented to Environmental Performance Scrutiny Committee and Cabinet for comment. And consent was given to consult with a number of statutory and non-statutory consultees and the wider community as is required by Schedule 11 of the Environmental Act 1995. The consultation exercise on the draft plan ran between the 19th of February and the 19th of March this year, 2020. A copy of the consultation plan can be seen at appendix C. There were two strands to the consultation. Direct correspondence to statutory consultees such as DEFRA, Environmental Agency, Lincolnshire County Council and neighbouring local authorities. In addition, direct correspondence was sent to other specific non-statutory consultees such as the Port of Boston, NHS Trust, Public Health England and Lincolnshire Chamber of Commerce. In terms of specific statutory and non-statutory consultees, no responses were received to the consultation. The results of the consultation were disappointing considering that the implementation of the plan will need the cooperation of organisations within the group whilst no formal response was received from Lincolnshire County Council highways. I would point out that they have already been part of the process of drafting the action plan with the key officers sitting on the working group. In addition, regular meetings are held with LCC highways officers and LCC councillors regarding Transport in Boston, Boston Transport Group. Air quality is part of the remit of the group due to its direct association to traffic. The second strand was an online public questionnaire. This was well-publicised on the council's website and the council's Twitter and Facebook pages and Boston Bulletin, which is distributed to approximately 4,000 recipients within the borough. There were 26 responses received from the wider community. These were generally supportive of the plan. A summary of the responses received can be found at appendix A in the report. More details can be found within the appendices of the action plan itself. The headline results were 84% agreed, 44% partially agreed, 40% with the overall approach described in the plan to improve air quality. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I should say, only 8% disagreed with the overall approach of the plan. Of the measures proposed within the action plan, those responding believed the following measures were most important. This is where it gets interesting. Provision of an outer distributor road, 68% wanted that. Junction improvements to aid traffic flow, 68%. To promote cycling and walking as an alternative to car, 64%. Of the measures proposed with the action plan, those responding believed the following measures were least important. Workplace parking levy, 68%. And investigate reduced car parking charges for EV vehicles and hybrid. And that percentage was 56%. The results of the consultation exercise have been incorporated into the final air quality action plan. No proposed action within the draft plan have been amended following the consultation. With the approval of Cabinet, the air quality action plan will now be submitted to DEFRA through the local air quality management portal for approval and be formally adopted by the council, subject to DEFRA's approval of it. The production of an air quality action plan does not resolve the air quality issues that we experience but provides a framework that the council will try to achieve to improve air quality within the management areas and beyond over the coming years. As previously stated, many of the actions within the plan are beyond the powers or remit the council has of its own and therefore for it to be successful in supplementing national air quality strategies implemented by government, other partners will be needed to be willing to engage in its implementation. Of particular importance is the continuing support of Lincolnshire County Council in its role as highway authority. And that's the report, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for that.
Sorry it was rather long.
Well, unfortunately, these partnership reports tend to be. And you've got over, it's not the Borough of Boston wholly that deliver the air quality. It's everybody in the partnership, including DEFRA helping us. The events of the last few weeks have actually improved our air quality no end. So probably the figures will look really good. However, I don't recommend the method. Anyway, thank you for that. I will now ask the Cabinet members if they have any questions on this report. Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me all right?
I can, David. You're crystal clear.
Okay, I just haven't got any vision or anything. Anyway, if you fail to start hearing me, please shout at me. On page three, 1.8, the production of an air quality action plan does not resolve the air quality issue but provides a framework for what the council will try to achieve to improve air quality within the air quality management areas and beyond over the coming years. And I would seriously suggest that in that framework, we look at, and councillor Stevens has already alluded to, an outer ring road. And I've been sort of bouncing this idea off people for quite some time about an eastern bypass to come off the A16 at the Quadrant Roundabout, go over the fields, over the Haven. You've only got one bridge to build and come out at Johnson's Garden Centre. We have been long talking about a distributor road running through housing estates and that to me seems the wrong principle. Whenever a new road is built, millions of trees are planted. I've just been down the A14 today, which has had a multimillion pound facelift. And indeed, each side of the new road are millions of trees planted. And that reduces your nitrogen, carbon monoxide, whatever, forgive me, I'm not a scientist. I don't really understand which one it is. With regard to the air pollution on Bargette Bridge and Haven Bridge, I'm hardly surprised because the traffic there, there's 38,000 traffic movements within 24 hours. So there's the answer staring at us really. And we've got to reduce the amount of traffic that comes into the town. And I'm convinced an eastern bypass would do that. My camera's come on now, so you can probably see me now, can you?
Not unless I ask camera to the front.
All right, okay. All right. So that's it for me for now. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Griggs?
Yeah, firstly, I'd like to thank councillor Stevens for a well-written report. It's got a lot of information in. My main point, and it's something councillor Stevens touched upon, is the disappointing response we got to the consultation with statutory agencies. For instance, it's got to be passed by the Secretary of State, but they didn't even comment on it in the first place. Same with the Environment Agency. And councillor Stevens hit the nail on the head, you know, this plan is going to take a lot of working with external partners. And so I'm just not particularly impressed with the level of response that they could be bothered to give us. But a fantastic report.
Thank you. Councillor Howard?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Leader. Yeah, again, good detailed report. Well done, councillor Stevens. I have no issues with it whatsoever.
Councillor Sharman?
Hi, yeah, I can only echo what the other councillors have said. I think it's a brilliant report and I think it's really important to go forward with it.
Thank you. Councillor Welton?
Thank you, Leader. No further comments from my point. Thank you.
Right, I'll ask councillor Stevens after this thorough report to both propose the report and go through the recommendations.
Thank you, Leader. I note these recommendations that are carried. And the recommendations are: Cabinet, one, Cabinet notes the results of the consultation exercise on the draft air quality action plan. Two, Cabinet recommends air quality action plan, now formally submitted to DEFRA for approval and adoption by the council following the consultation on the draft plan. And three, once approved by DEFRA, an updated report, an update report on progress on air quality action plan is presented to Cabinet on a six-monthly basis as requested by Cabinet. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'm very happy to second that. And Lorraine, will you call out Cabinet members' names in alphabetical order and will they respond?
Thank you, Chairman. As previously, if you could say for against abstain. Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Griggs?
Four.
Councillor Howard?
Four.
Councillor Sharman?
Four.
Councillor Skinner?
Four.
Councillor Stevens?
Four.
Councillor Welton? unanimously carried, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item four is the quarter three report for performance, risk and finance. And the way we normally do this is each portfolio presents the information of their area responsibility as set out in the order of the report. I will take the lead there by presenting my area first. So on the report, the first item on the report is to do with sickness. On the long-term sickness, we are slightly below target. And the others are other items. Sickness happens since overall is on target and short-term days is on target. Sickness happenstance overall is on target, and short-term days is on target. Going on to corporate priority three place, the number of antisocial behaviour stage one ASB letters. If we look at last year's quarter three, it was twenty-two. This year it's thirty-one. We look at stage two antisocial behaviour letters, it is twenty-three this quarter. Last year it was one. And the number of acceptable behaviour agreements, quarter three this year is seven, and last year it was zero. So this to me would show that our antisocial behaviour team are working well. They've progressed where necessary from stage one to stage two to also the acceptable behaviour. So I'm really happy to know that the team is working how it should be. Going on from there, the number of civil injunctions secured, quarter three, this time round it's two, and community protection orders, notices and criminal behaviour, zero. So then we move on to quarter three. We look at the number of CCT directed and assisted arrests. This year on quarter three, we have seventy-two. Last year, quarter three, it was a hundred and ninety-three. So this would seemingly show that we have been not directed to assist by the police, waft them. Looking at the number of evidence packages, quarter three, this year forty-two, last year one hundred and forty-five. Now, these are the packages that are requested by the police. Looking again at the number of CCT incidents recorded, quarter three, this year two hundred and nine, quarter three last year, four hundred and seventy-eight. With, also moving on to RIPA, the Regulation in Vestry Powers Act two thousand to carry out surveillance and investigation, there have actually been no RIPA applications in this quarter three. However, we had a very good blue light day, and there were several positive comments, both fed back through email and also through social media. Well done, events team as well. I'll now pass over to councillor Nigel Welton.
Thank you, leader. During this period of performance, sorry, during this period of performance, it was only marginally affected by COVID nineteen. But I would like to tell you that our planning team have remained open for business throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic, and we are still receiving undetermined planning applications every week. Of the ten performance indicators in my area, eight are exceeding targets and two are on target. I am particularly pleased to see that the percentage of major applications determined currently stands at eighty-four percent against a target of seventy-five percent. Minor applications determined currently are eighty-three percent against a target of sixty-five, and all their applications, ninety-three percent against a target of eighty percent. In relation to complaints, there were five, of which two were justified, but I note that one planning complaint that was justified did not have an impact on the decision made. So therefore, I'd like to say thanks to all the teams who work so hard to deliver this performance to the residents of the borough. And as the previous cabinet meeting, I'd like to personally add my thanks to the lead officer who ensures that every member of these teams have everything they need to do during this difficult time to carry on doing the work and serving the people of the borough. Thank you, leader.
Thank you. I'll pass my thanks on to your team as well. Moving on to finance and governance, councillor Martin Howard, please.
Thank you, leader. Yes. I'd say I've got some obviously at the end of each everybody's portfolio. I've got some headline statements regarding risk and performance. But yeah, I'd just like to thank Paul Julian and his team, who have kept me well informed, lots of information. Obviously, COVID nineteen is going to have a big impact on sort of future sort of quarterly reports, but obviously, to put it in the context, this is the quarter three report to the end of December twenty nineteen. But obviously, I'll come back on to headlines, quotes and statements at the end of everybody, all portfolios.
Thank you for that, Martin. Moving on to environmental services, councillor Von Stevens, would you like to present?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Portfolio covers a multitude of areas. And in the food businesses, we are better than the target, that we are above target, so well done to our food safety. Going down, the food safety inspections complete, completed. We're on target with those. Household waste, refuse, recycled, composted. Unfortunately, we're a little below on that particular target. And also, the residual household waste per household, again, we're a little bit below. But under the auspices of Lincolnshire the auspices of Lincolnshire Waste Partnership, the council is partaking at a twelve-month trial with the county with South Holland and North Casteven, which aims to improve recycling rates, reduce residual waste and tackle contamination in domestic recycling. Trial runs will run until September, and I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about, the purple bins. Of the fly tip, we tried to respond to fly tip within two days. And it's been a little difficult with this COVID nineteen that's been about. And we are a little bit below, but I can understand that with the situation that we're in. But a comment, the three hundred and three fly tips were collected in quarter three. However, the service was off the road for six days over Christmas and New Year due to the unavailability of volunteers and the relief driver. So due to those circumstances, we actually didn't do too badly at all. As far as taxi drivers go, were suspended or revoked in quarter three, there was four. Number of vehicles suspended revoked, eleven. This all relates to quarter three. Number of taxi driver vehicles hearings, we had three hearings. Number of premises hearings, sorry, number of premises licence revoked, one. And number of licensing act hearings, eight. We've got, need to have a feather in the cap because our commercial waste service is growing. And in quarter three, the growth in income in commercial waste service compared to the previous year, that's up by thirty-two percent. That's brilliant. And the growth of the number of commercial waste customers compared to previous year, that's up by thirty percent. Again, excellent, well done. The contamination in waste recycling. Now, I think Boston can take a bit of a feather in its cap because we're below target, we're below what the Lincolnshire average is. So well done, Boston, and let's keep it up. Number of fly tip incidents in quarter three, we had three hundred and three. But in quarter three, eighteen nineteen, we had three hundred and sixty-one. And even though fly tip is a blight on the landscape, we are at it. People might not think we're at it quite so much as we are, but we are at it. The department is really very, very keen. And then fly tips by volume, we had in this year, quarter three, we've had one that was a significant load. We've had eleven tipper loads, we've had sixty-seven transit vans, we've had a hundred and nineteen small vans, forty-two car booths and twenty-two single items. So it's all got to change. The number of fixed penalty notices issued in December, there was eighty. The payments due, number of payments due, twenty-four, and the number of payments paid is fifty-two. And any that's written off or cancelled was two. So we're moving on again, and then I'm looking at complaints. There were six complaints about my portfolio, and three of them were justified, as you'll see in the paperwork. One was partly justified, and two weren't justified, and that's areas where we're going to have to sharpen our pencil and improve. But on the other hand, we had fifteen compliments, so well done for all the compliments. Thank you, leader. That's my report.
Thank you very, very much. Very comprehensive. Just in case people think that the borough's asleep, anybody that has fly tipped and left details in their bags will be getting caught up with in a short amount of time. Town centre then, councillor Chelsea Sherman, would you like to do your report, please?
Yeah. The quarterly report for car parking and permit income continues to increase and be above target. If you turn to page one oh six, there is a breakdown of each car park's income. Our market is below target but will be reviewed as part of the transformation programme, and we will look at ways to start improving its income within that. And that's all for me, leader.
Thank you very much, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Moving on now to housing and communities, councillor Martin Griggs, would you like to present your report, please?
Yep. So first off, the housing completions were up on their target. Obviously, the COVID nineteen situation may mean that we won't realise the overall yearly target. Number of affordable homes delivered, we're on target, and we've actually achieved exactly the number required. The number of non-local authority-owned properties returning to occupation, we're nearly double the target, and improved housing standards, we're miles above the target as well. And I think that's, you know, a big thank you to the enforcement guys, and as we in cabinet know, we struggle to recruit people to that role for the money we'll pay compared to what they can get elsewhere. So I think it's real testament of the hard work they do. The new housing register applications, quarter three is down on all the other quarters this year and lower than the same quarter over historic data. Obviously, again, we don't know what the impact of COVID nineteen will be, whether people are fed up of being at home with their spouses, or whether, once we come out and people can't afford mortgages, et cetera, obviously, we'll have to have a look and see what we can do to help people who need it, but at present, that's it for that one. We had three complaints, none of which were justified. Unfortunately, we also had no compliments. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Martin. Nice to know what's going on in your part of the world. I will now ask all of the cabinet members if they've got any questions on any part of the reports. So I'll start off with councillor Brown. Have you got any queries regarding the reports?
I've got no, thank you, Chairman. I've got no queries. I haven't done my report yet. I don't know whether you want to hear that now or later.
Apologies. Continue, councillor Brown.
Well, firstly, on quarter three, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, our swim sessions at Jeff Mulder, our target was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and we achieved a hundred and fifteen thousand. Gym memberships, our target for that quarter was one thousand three hundred and fifty, and we achieved one thousand four hundred and eighty-five. And our event income, our target was thirteen five three oh, and we achieved nineteen one six six. The Guildhall door count for quarter three has dropped from the previous quarter. Quarter two was four six three six. And that's dropped to two nine four two, but again, that quarter is entering into the COVID situation. And of course, my next report on this, on quarter four, will be somewhat disappointing. We've had four complaints, one of which was justified, and this is a complaint about an injury caused by a barrier at an event, which the outcome was the security company have apologised to the complainant and made a donation to the charity of her choice. In future, we will offer permits in advance to residents and businesses in that area to prove access. I'm delighted to report, I've got three and a half full pages of compliments regarding the Christmas lights and market, and typically, a very good evening again. Thanks must go to the lads who put so much graft in. Brilliant, excellent for the kids, looks like it's going to be a fab and wonderful atmosphere, et cetera, et cetera. So that's very, very pleasing. However, I should warn everybody that these figures that I've quoted just now will obviously be pretty awful when we report back on quarter four because of COVID nineteen. So that's my report, Chairman. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry for, you know, stealing your thunder earlier, but I think it must have been compliments envy that really shook me out, shook you out there. Would you like to ask any of the others any other questions?
No, not at this stage, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. councillor Griggs, do you have any questions?
Yeah, one for you, Mr. Chairman. The number of arrests and CCTV packages, would you be able to find out and feedback to cabinet whether that's linked to the number of incidents reported or not? Because I think we all know, as the many residents in Boston, that crime is potentially higher than the official figures show, so it'd be nice to see if our data corresponds with the police's data on incidents reported. And then just for councillor Howard and councillor Brown. Councillor Howard, the budget claimant time, especially in a world where all we hear is bad news about how long benefits take to sort, I was really impressed to see that many of them were, you know, taking less than half of our target time. And councillor Brown, I just want to echo your comments about the Christmas in Boston event. Obviously, I take my children up there every year, and it's great fun, and I think it's all recognition to especially the electricians and the Christmas in Boston team. I think they do a fantastic job for the members of the community, so if you could just pass our thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Martin. Let's just hope that we can achieve the same kind of standard again this year.
Thank you. I'll just go back to you, Martin, on the CCTV directed and assisted arrests. The number there is when the police call for assistance and the CCTV operators follow, so that those figures are down from the year before. So I'm not going to comment on anything other than we can only do directed and assisted arrests when we're requests. The same with the evidence packages. We can only deliver those when they're requested. We normally do a few more anyway, but that's the number that were actually requested for prosecutions. And then the general number of incidents recorded, this time round up to December, was two hundred and nine, where the previous year was four hundred and seventy-eight. So our CCTV, if anything, has got better with the cameras. I wouldn't say anything other than it does seem to show a drop in trend of the number of incidents recorded, because maybe they didn't happen. So there we go. Councillor Sherman, do you have any questions?
No, nothing to add.
Thank you. councillor Stevens?
No, Chairman, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Welton?
Everything's fine. Thank you, leader.
Thank you very much. Well, we'll move on to the second part and I will now ask councillor Howard to present risk and finance information. Thank you, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, this is the risk and finance headlines for quarter three, December. Obviously, again, has been, has been sort of stated, things could look very different when we start looking at COVID. Finance areas, benefit processing times continue to be good. Collection of council tax and business rates are on target. The trend, there is a slight reduction in net business rates, but an increase in empties. Another trend, the new housing benefit and council tax support schemes. Case leading both shows seasonality and we should have a better comparison once we've got a year's worth of information. Been a very small number of complaints. We will continue to seek to improve these, but overall performance was in line with targets for quarter three. Risk, there are no new strategic risks identified for the end of December, sorry. Obviously, COVID updates will be necessary next time around and will be incorporated in future quarters. Strategic and operational risks continue to be managed in accordance with the risk management framework. Going into more detail on risk for quarter three, at the end of quarter three, revenue, a small net underspend is projected and details are in section three. The controlling migration fund in section four shows approximately two-thirds spent as at thirty-first December. Trade in income is in line with the budget. Reserves, the recommendations are to approve movements as set out in table six for the reasons shown in the narrative below, which I'm about to read. Treasury and property fund information set out in section seven. Capital recommendations are to approve free changes. Slippies for marginal viability fund and townscape heritage, along with new electric charging point scheme. And supplementary estimate recommendation also to improve towns from capacity funding. Obviously, as again, the COVID pandemic will revise these projections and the impacts on two thousand nineteen, twenty will be reported in the outset report in due course. I'm happy to take any questions and I'm sure Mr. Julian would help me with anything that I haven't quite got the information for. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Howard. Councillor Brown, do you have any questions?
None at this stage, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Briggs?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Sharman?
Nothing, no, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stevens?
No questions, thank you.
Councillor Welton?
Nothing on this report, but I just want to reiterate what's been said already that the impact of COVID nineteen on our risk management will have an impact at some stage. And I know that councillor Howard is working on that as we speak and I look forward to a report at the next Cabinet on the impacts of what we've seen so far. So thank you for the report.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. Obviously, you've done the recommendations, Martin, as well. Are you happy to propose your report?
Yes, I'm very happy to propose this quarter three update and report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second there?
Councillor Welton, I'll second that report.
Thank you very much. Right then, recommendations have been moved and seconded, so we'll move to the vote. Lorraine, will you call out the cabinet members' names in alphabetical order so they may respond?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Briggs?
Four.
Councillor Howard?
Four.
Councillor Sharman?
Four.
Councillor Skinner?
Four.
Councillor Stevens?
Four.
Councillor Welton?
Four.
Unanimously carried, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Really good reports from everybody, thank you. We now move on to item five, which is the Business Rates Pilot Fund. And I should be presenting this report. The Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government, formerly the Department of Communities and Local Government, sought areas as part of a hundred percent business rates retention initiative. Lincolnshire was a successful applicant for the pilot status in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And the benefits to us total three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which was placed in reserves. A report in the Cabinet on the fifth of June, twenty nineteen, agreed a set of projects to which this funding was to be allocated. The pilot has really provided a great opportunity to fund a variety of projects the council would normally not have the resources to fund and will help deliver objectives, both in the corporate plan and also the economic development plan, whilst promoting strong links with stakeholders, partners, et cetera. The Cabinet received a report with a series of initiatives that would create skills and economic benefits for the whole community. Indeed, the EV charging points mentioned earlier in the report, eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three pounds of this spend was committed. Indeed, if we, this was in hold early March, but if we look in, for instance, the West End car park, those bays have been adjusted and the equipment for charging your electric vehicle are now in place. Primary engineer, absolutely great project. One of the former leaders was extremely keen on this. Forty, forty K was committed to this. It's nearing completion of the second year. I believe last year, a year six people won the prize, be an engineer for a day for the whole of this eastern region. Absolutely fantastic. Entrepreneurship, growth funding programme, this is temporarily on hold. And the reason for this, as we're doing the town fund, this match funding could actually deliver a much bigger impact on any of the projects in the future. NNDR incentive relocation fund remains live. This is an incentive scheme that encourages people to move their business into the area. Supporting countrywide enterprise coordinators. This delivered through the LET and Careers and Enterprise Company. This project has been completed and it was an eight hundred pound spend. Support for the high street through the use of technology. Initially, this project was conceived as a shopping app. The rate, the retailers didn't really support this. So the leader and deputy at the time agreed a smaller project on social media and Visit Boston Facebook page was born. Obviously, again, with COVID nineteen, we have not been able to promote any activities because basically there aren't any. By mid February, when with the impact of COVID nineteen becoming a national matter of concern, the impact on the wider economy immediately became, of course, for concern. PN headlines on the impact of business community, seventy-one percent have furloughed staff. Sixty-nine percent have less than three months cash flow. Twenty percent of retailers may not reopen. Five point one percent drop in retail sales for March, the largest drop in thirty years. However, not a surprise because most places were closed. Ninety-four percent of millennials and generation Z have dramatically changed their shopping habits. As a result, spending much less on experiences. Twenty-four percent of boomers said events were impacting on spend and thirty-four percent of generation X said events were impacting on spend. The review of this project creates an opportunity to use the funds within this Business Rates Pilot Fund to make a great impact, to assist with the recovery of business community and mitigate some of the impact of COVID nineteen through the borough. Excuse me. I'll go through, outline the recommendations and then I'll move it and then anybody can ask questions. The first part is to agree to amend the recommendations of the Cabinet report dated fifth of June, twenty nineteen, for the reasons set out in this report. Two, to allocate a hundred and seventy thousand to the Business Recovery Fund, delegated to the Director of Growth in consultation with the Chief Finance Officer and Leader and Deputy of the Council. Three, to allocate thirty thousand pounds to support for the high street through the use of technology and delegated to the Director of Growth in consultation with the Leader and Portfolio Holder for Finance. Four is to allocate fifty thousand to a feasibility proposal fund and delegate that to the Director of Growth in consultation with the Leader and Portfolio Holder for Finance. Finally, to allocate fifty thousand to support Business Short Term Recovery Fund and delegate that once again to Director of Growth in consultation with the Leader and Portfolio for Finance. I've read those out. I've read the effect of COVID nineteen. I'll now ask any of the Cabinet members if they have any questions. So councillor Brown?
No, I don't actually, Leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Briggs?
No questions, but a couple of comments. And I think that the new proposals are fantastic, you know, Business Recovery Fund and the Support for Small Businesses Fund, I think will be vital. You know, we all know that high streets are in decline as it is. Yeah, even going back to when I was a child, there were a lot more shops about and the shopping experience was more full and you could get more things. Shame on Woolies forever to go and bust. But I think, you know, these funds are really crucial for the people of Boston to ensure that actually they can continue to get what they require from shopping in Boston and obviously to help the businesses and their employees to retain jobs.
Thank you for that, councillor Briggs. I believe the same as you, support local or lose it. Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Leader. No, I've no specific questions, just a small, brief comment. I totally agree with what councillor Briggs has just said and I am keen to get involved in all these projects because obviously with my business background, I do appreciate how the economics and commerce works. So I'm very much looking forward to getting involved in these.
Thank you for that. Councillor Sharman?
Thank you, Leader, nothing to add.
Thank you very much. Councillor Stevens?
Thank you, Chairman. I thought the report was really, really interesting and thank you, but I have nothing to add to it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Welton?
Yeah, thank you, Leader. I think it's important to note on the report that the money was put into reserves. And it's fantastic having money put into reserves, but if we just set them in the bank and don't use them, then that is not a good idea. By using that money to help with the promotion of the town and businesses and all the other things that are being done, I think that's a brilliant move. And there was a part of your report where you mentioned about a previous leader. I think I'd like to put it on record that that previous leader was councillor Cooper, who was extremely hardworking behind the scenes to make sure that some of these projects were turned from concept and ideas into reality. And I think without his work behind the scenes, that wouldn't have happened. So I think it's fair that we as Cabinet recognise that previous Cabinet members and the impact and things that they've done in the past are now starting to come to fruition. Thank you, Leader.
Yes, I concur with what you said. A lot, a lot of effort gone into this. I'll just make a comment on reserves. It's nice to have them there and be able to support people going forward. But obviously, thing is with reserves, you can only spend them once. But I'm quite happy to propose the recommendations in this report. So do I have a second there?
Yes, councillor Howard will second the motion.
Thank you very much. Recommendations have been moved and seconded, so I'll move to the vote. Lorraine, will you call out Cabinet members' names in alphabetical order and they will respond? Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Briggs?
Four.
Councillor Howard?
Four.
Councillor Sharman?
Four.
Councillor Skinner?
Four.
Councillor Stevens?
Four.
Councillor Welton?
Four.
Unanimously carried, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item six, which is the COVID nineteen Budget Impact Report. And I will ask councillor Martin Howard to present. Could you bring councillor Howard to the screen, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Yes, the COVID nineteen Budget Impact Report. I don't like to be the bearer of bad news, but obviously we all need to be aware of the situation and just to say that we're not the only council that's in this position. But the COVID nineteen Budget Impact Report, for your information, it's a projected position whilst we're still in the heart of response to the virus. So obviously, there's going to be sort of significant changes and it's a very fluid situation. There are significant impacts being experienced and more to be expected. We have been helping support government response via payments and business grants and so far to date, over one thousand one hundred have been paid out, which totals twelve point five million pounds, with extension to the scheme being recently announced, plus CTS, council tax support, that is, additional award being applied via software update. The main income losses, which is obviously going to be a thing that is going to impact us, are the leisure and parking areas. Currently, the estimate totals of a income loss of one point seven million pounds. Also, additional costs for IT, setting up working from home, homelessness and transformation programme non-achievement. The government announced commitment to cover costs and there's been two tranches totaling three point two billion pounds so far. Us as a council in the first tranche received forty-seven thousand pounds. In the second tranche, we received seven hundred and three thousand pounds. These only partly offset our losses. Also, future years are uncertain and will depend on how the economy is brought back as well as how customers respond to this. Further support is hoped and ongoing lobbying is obviously essential. Lincolnshire combined efforts through Lincolnshire Finance Offices, Ministry of Housing Control and Local Governments are also collecting data on impacts monthly, on a monthly basis. We are obviously continuing to monitor impacts and we'll report back regularly as and when we can. There are longer term concerns around council tax base and business rates income. The fair funding and business rate retention issues have been deferred for another year. Also, business rate revaluation postponement announcement has been made. So all in all, not really good news, but we're doing what we can under the circumstances and we are obviously lobbying. The situation, as I say, is very fluid. But we will certainly, I as finance portfolio holder with the assistance of Mr. Julian and his team will be updating on a regular basis as soon as we get the information. And that's really the impact report.
Thank you for that, councillor Howard. Not a pleasant one to convey to people. This is a very serious situation which we find ourselves in and we have been lobbying to the government, et cetera. But there, again, everybody has. And you did mention that there are other councils in worse state than us. Indeed, there are, even within Lincolnshire. I think the prudence that we've operated will stand us in good stead, but only for a short time because, as I say, you can only spend your reserves once. I will now ask the Cabinet members if I will now ask the Cabinet members if they'd like to ask you questions and I'll start off with councillor Brown, please.
Thank you, Chairman. No, I haven't really got any questions for Martin on this stage, thank you.
Councillor Griggs?
No questions, but a couple of comments. I think it's really crucial that all of us within the council, be it Cabinet or other people, continue lobbying and I know the report mentions it, but obviously we're going to take a significant financial hit, which will impact on our ability to provide services in the future. It'd be nice if central government said, yep, we'll pay every penny you've lost. Obviously, most councils are in a similar position to us. The problem is, even if they do, the schemes we run, especially within housing, for instance, Homes England, Frequently Give Us Money and the Help to Buy schemes may dry up quicker than anticipated. So regardless of what happens, it's going to have some real long-term effects on the ability to deliver in the way we've been delivering in the past.
Thank you. Councillor Sharm?
No, nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you. Stevens?
I don't have any questions, but it's certainly a reality check when you hear a report like you've just presented, Martin. But it is as it is. We've got COVID-19 and we've got to deal with what the outcome from it, but thank you for the report.
Thank you. Councillor Welton?
Thank you, Leader. Just a very brief comment that in order to see where we're going, you need to look at where we are now and where we are now is in a very bad situation. And how long this goes on for and the long-term impact will be damaging to our town and we need to have that in the backs of our minds. And it's not just about the impact on some services, this has an impact on the community of Boston as a whole. It's not just about figures, it's about people. It's not just about buildings, it's about homes and it's about jobs and it's about everything that makes this town wonderful. So, you know, can I ask councillor Howard to make sure that he is constantly on the ball with this? And I know he is and I know that on a day-by-day basis, he's dealing with this. So I think I'm confident we've got somebody there that is doing this and it's going to have an impact on every single one of us and that does worry me immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. Welton, as you quite rightly said, yes, I am keeping my finger on the button on a daily basis. I will, you know, as often as needed and when we've got the relevant information, but thank you for that, Nigel.
Do we have a proposal for the recommendations in the report?
Yeah, as I say, obviously I will propose it, as I say, to be noted by Cabinet. Again, as the information comes through, the Cabinet will be updated.
Thank you very much for that. Do we have a second there?
Yes, I'll second it, Chairman.
I'm happy to second that.
Thank you very much. Fight amongst yourselves.
I said it first.
Okay, that's fine, councillor Brown. So we'll move on now to Lorraine and could you call out the Cabinet members' names in alphabetical order and I'm sure they will respond?
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Griggs?
Four.
Councillor Howard?
Four.
Councillor Sharm?
Four.
Councillor Skinner?
Four.
Councillor Stevens?
Four.
Councillor Welton?
Four.
That's unanimously carried, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Because the next item has been adjourned to the nearest convenient date to give it the sort of importance it deserves, this then concludes the meeting and I thank you all for your attendance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Leader.